Round the nose.
We have a regular meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Today's February 26th. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. McLean, could you please call the roll?
Buckler.
Present.
Mirad.
Present.
Patterson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Shadle.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Trotto.
Here.
Kapalansky.
Here.
Commissioner Kempner is out of town this week.
Okay. All right, are there any changes or do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McLean?
Buckler.
Yes.
Mirad.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Kapalansky.
Yes.
All right, next up is the minutes from the January 22nd meeting. Are there any changes or any motions to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from the January 22nd, 2019 meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. McLean?
Mirad.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
Kapalansky.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to communications. I didn't see anything additional this evening. Is there anything you wanted to share?
Uh, no communications at this time.
Okay. That brings us then to citizen comments. Any citizens that have comments for items not on the agenda, please come forward. At this time, we ask you to sign in on the sheet provided there next to Councilmember Gavin. Um, just a reminder that the Planning Commission will not engage you in discussion. And when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address and keep your comments to four minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close citizen comments then and move on to our first order of business. Which would be the site plan review for SP 0119 FSC Holdings LLC. Is the applicant here? Okay. Do you want to step forward and introduce yourself for the record?
Uh, good evening. Ari Zartarian on behalf of FSC Holdings.
And Daniel Sakiev.
Okay. Mr. McLean, is there any kind of staff report for this one? This is one we'd seen before, correct?
Yes, uh, the applicant is proposing some changes from the site plan that had been previously approved from August of 2018. One of the biggest changes on the, uh, plan that they're proposing this evening is they removed, there's some horizontal, uh, screening that they were removing that covered, uh, a large portion of the facade. Uh, one of the other changes, um, one of the conditions that the Planning Commission had asked for back in August was the, uh, removal of the vertical portion of the steel awning. That vertical portion has been removed and the applicant is instead proposing a cloth awning instead.
Okay. And it's just the facade that's changing, correct?
Correct.
Is there anything that you gentlemen want to add to that?
Uh, well, we came here in August with this ambitious, uh, re-siding, uh, the building and, uh, I guess a rain screen, uh, made out of cedar, but due to budgetary reasons, we had to remove it. And we're not really redoing more than 50% of the facade anymore, but as far as the city knows, we were still going to go ahead with this, uh, cedar siding. So we're just here saying like this is the new plan. We're painting the brick and doing a few miscellaneous items, but we aren't changing more than 50% of the facade anymore.
Okay.
It's more of a courtesy, I believe.
It's a revised site plan from what you previously said. A revised facade.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to comment on this item? No? Okay, then I'll open it up for the commission's discussion. Mr. Richardson?
I just have a question, more or less strictly out of curiosity. Why are you sticking with the cedar for the, uh, the opening, to close up the opening? I, I'm just curious about that.
Uh, I just want to give some warmth to the facade. I mean, it's, it's such brick and-
It's a lot of black and white.
Yeah, black and white and some, I guess, shushugibon cedar wood would be a nice accent to the facade.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Smith?
So one other item, um, I came in late, in the middle of your discussion back in August. The only thing I noticed here is on the nor, the extra elevation, uh, up in the upper item number three, or detail number three.
Okay.
You had a, it looks like you had some storefront planned for that block wall in the previous plan. It's missing on this plan. I mean, that's, that's fine with me, but you've deleted those, those windows also.
Uh-
Or with the power of the computers, did it just get lost?
Yeah, it's budgetary. We got rid of, uh, future-wise, we, it's still on the permit right now, but we just have, we need to take it out. It was just way too expensive.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Just, I'm sure just a question. The, the awning is not going to have any signage, is that correct?
No.
No.
I have a quick question. It, I think I was looking at the crack building when I was driving by, but is it, are the windows a dark tint now?
The existing windows are a dark tint. We're replacing two windows on the southern bays to new clear windows.
And then the darker tint will remain on most of them?
Yeah.
Okay, um, just kind of-
For the time being.
Okay.
Two, three years down the road and we get some more money and we hope to replace those also.
All right, just a point of clarification then on your renderings. It's not, it's not clear just from a quick glance at it that it'll have the darker tint, so-
Okay.
That threw me off a bit, but thanks for clarifying that.
Um, the wall packs in the back, has anybody made any, look into if the, they may impact the neighbors behind them?
We had a photometric done before and in the previous meeting in August, uh, you mentioned everything needs to point downwards. So the renderings are showing like a wall pack that you see it, but everything is going to be pointing downwards.
That's fine.
Any other questions, comments, motions?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Do we need to, I don't remember on the previous, um, August motion. I know we made a motion regarding that vertical, part of the awning. Did, did we have a condition, uh, regarding the, the wall pack, especially on the rear, to be shielded?
Yes, I think that was a condition and I think it'd be good to include it again.
Do we include it again or it's still active? Okay. Cause that, that's-
Even if they're meeting it, I don't think it hurts to include it then.
Madam Chair, and by ordinance for the outdoor lighting, you know, they're required to have shielding so that the light is directed downward.
Mm-hmm.
Did you want to make that motion?
I can make a motion. I would make a motion to re-approve. Uh, it's like, well, I guess we're approving it to approve as modified. It's a new site plan review, SP 0119.
Yep.
So, um, I would make a motion to approve it with the one caveat that, um, make sure that the fixtures, especially on the east side, there's a couple of them back there that are shielded. Since we don't have the photometrics and I don't recall if they had them at the time, but just make sure they're shielded.
I'll support.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. McLean, could you please call the roll?
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
Mirad.
Yes.
Kapalansky.
Yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. You're all set with us. Good luck with the business.
Thanks for coming in, by the way.
Yeah, thanks for doing it, Jim.
Okay, next up we have another site plan review, SP 0219 Dumars LLC. Is the applicant here?
Uh, Eric Feldman, 3171 West 12 Mile.
Andy Bader, the architect.
Mr. McLean, do you want to introduce this item for us?
Yes, the property owner at 3171 12 Mile is, is looking to change their facade. Currently, they do not have a tenant in the building, but, uh, they were looking to, uh, to do their facade first and then, uh, find someone to inhabit the building. One of the biggest changes to the facade is that they're looking to increase the, uh, the window size, which by ordinance, uh, they're required to have a minimum of 40% windows and a maximum of 80%. Although the window is being enlarged, um, it currently is, is still under that 40% threshold.
And it's my understanding that they are changing all of that one particular facade, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the Planning Commission can modify that standard if we so choose? The window?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything that you wanted to add to that?
Um, realist, uh, in, in doing that with the change, we're lowering, lowering the glass, um, down about three and a half feet roughly. And, um, you could take that all the way down to the grade, but from a, you know, design standpoint and durability, it doesn't really, you know, to have some sort of masonry while we're keeping portion of it, just kind of seems, it makes a little more sense. And then if we were to go up, the problem with that, it'd become, uh, you get into a big structural issue because we're not widening the opening or going up. There's already existing lintel going across. So otherwise, if you had to do that, that's just going to be a lot more expense for, for the owner. So that was kind of what drove, you know, doing what we did.
Could you move it to, push it to the side?
Well, the lintel goes from opening to opening, so we're keeping the same width and everything like that.
Okay. All right.
That was why it was done, the way it was done.
And what was the percentage that they're off, Mr. McLean, again?
8%.
Okay, is there anyone from the audience who wanted to comment on this item? No? Okay, then I'll open it up for a Planning Commission discussion. Anyone?
Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
Uh, as, as the applicant and his architect said, to, uh, well, let me, let me ask you a question. This is a, is this a masonry? Is this a block?
Yeah, it's brick and-
Full brick on block?
Yeah, block in behind, so there's lintel holding, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so to raise it, would be, as they said, that, that's a, that's a big deal. That's a lot of money. Uh, they have about three feet of space left on the, what would be the west end. But that's, that west end is supporting the existing lintel there. So once again, you know, they could move it a couple of feet, but they're still going to be under the, uh, the 40%. I did some calculating. They go from 32 something to 36 something. But for, you know, for the expense they would incur with a load bearing, the steel, I assume there's a steel lintel in there?
Yeah.
With, uh, you know, on the masonry, that's just, it, it just doesn't make sense for a couple of percent of, uh, of, uh, of glass. They are, you know, in the spirit of the ordinance, in my opinion, they took it down to 18 inches above the floor line, I think. I think that meets the spirit of the ordinance. I never noticed this building before. And everybody knows why.
Don't blink.
This is possibly the most mundane building in all of Berkeley or facade, so I'm glad you're doing something to it. I just never kno, I, I've only been here 36 years. I've never noticed it. And I drove by, I go, I never saw that before, so. So-
Yes.
I, so I, I think, I think in the, in the spirit of the 40% glass, it's not 40%, they have a, the door is going to be glass?
Yeah.
And right now, the door is, looks like it's a seven-foot door with a little horizontal light above it, but you're going through an eight-foot high door?
Uh, actually, yeah, yeah, yep. So whatever the opening allows, I mean, it's, it's between eight, just in 710, somewhere in there.
In there somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay. On the back, uh, is that awning projecting?
It goes out, uh, what I have, I think I had it like, uh, 18 inches where it was projecting.
Oh, I see it on the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, nevermind. My apology. Uh, so in my opinion, I think they, you know, they, they, without them incurring an immense amount of, of, of expense for a couple of percentages of glass, I don't have a problem with it as it is. Like I said, now we'll notice this facade instead of driving by it, so it's a vast improvement of what's there now. And that's my, in my opinion.
Mr. Richardson?
Can you tell me what the current percentage of window is on a facade? Do you know that?
Oh. Um, I, well, I'm, I'm adding, we took out three and a half feet, so it was only about a two-foot strip-high window that went across next to the door. So I think the width is about, maybe each one of those panels is probably about four feet, so we probably had, uh, 12 by, you know, to 24 square feet probably, I bet.
Yeah, it's about 10 to 15%.
Okay, and, uh, um, the door currently is not a glass door. You're going to replace it with-
Well, it is glass, but it's one of the older-
It's probably 40 years old at least.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of that front's been changed in all that time.
Yeah, okay.
Or 30, at least 30 years since you've been here.
36.
I haven't been here as long as him, I just, I just look like I have. So, thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chair, just a couple of questions.
Yes, Ms. Shadle?
Clarification. So ju, no signage at this time, is that correct?
Yeah, there's no tenant, so that's-
And no awning in the front, is that correct?
Nope, just flush with the-
All set? Anyone else?
Nope. Just happy they're fixing it up.
There you go.
Exactly.
I agree.
Gonna make it the nicest storefront.
That's good to hear.
Definitely will be an improvement. Are we, are we looking for a motion?
Uh, Mr. Patterson?
I can make a motion.
Oh, okay.
To approve, uh, site plan review, SP 0219.
I'll second it.
Um, do we want to include the modification for the reduced window percentage?
Well, I think we're accepting it as it is on the drawings, so there's no-
Okay.
And there's no outdoor lighting at this time, so that's fine. Uh, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Uh, when, hopefully soon, you have a, a, a tenant or two, try to be, come back to the city for a sign permit and they may want an awning on the outside, on the front, on the north base, we don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if, uh, if you were even be interested in having them have any awnings at this point afterwards, but-
Not real, I mean, I think an awning will be-
It's an unknown.
I mean, we did it in the back just so it would give a little character in the back.
That's fine.
Just to match the front.
There's no, there's no wrong answer, right answer. I was just curious, so you don't know.
Madam Chair? Yes, Ms. Shadle?
I'm just, just curious if, um, you all have read the downtown design guidelines, all of the new, uh, guidelines that we've been talking about for the last-
I have not.
Years, just curious if you've talked to anybody or-
But I've glanced over some of them.
Okay. Have you talked to anyone about what those guidelines are or how that may have helped this process?
I've breezed through them a bit.
I, I mean, I, I met with Vivian and talked to her a while ago, and I said we were going to do something, but then I didn't do anything for like six months and now she's here. She was excited. She emailed me the other day. She was excited, so.
It seems to, I mean, it seems to fit the guidelines, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
Me too.
Keep trying.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. McLean?
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
Mirad.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Kapalansky.
Yes.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
And we'll notice it next time we drive by.
Okay, we're already up to our final item on the agenda. That's a discussion on the master plan. We talked about the scope of work at one of the previous meetings and then, um, we had our grand ideas to think of that Marty introduced us to, that concept. Uh, Mr. McLean, did you want to add anything else before we start our discussion? Has anything changed in the scope of work that you proposed previously?
Nothing has changed, uh, just, uh, looking forward to hearing feedback from the commission. Hopefully, everybody did their homework.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to comment, comment on the master plan, scope of work? No? Okay. Marty, do you want to introduce your concept of what we're looking to achieve or talking about?
Yeah, I can't do that. Um, I'll reintroduce, I'll introduce it again. The whole point of this was, you know, we've talked a lot about policies. We've talked a lot about communications with all the stakeholders and all that, and that's great. But the bottom line is, and for the master plan, the bottom line is the built environment we live in. So, um, you know, what, what happens where, um, what it might look like, how we interact with it, and that could be the buildings, the roads, the sidewalks, the amenities, the services, whatever they are. And that's not just us, but as residents, but it's also visitors. How do visitors see our town? We always want to develop and get better. So, the idea was for us, spearheading this, come up with some ideas, and this is, should be the fun part. You know, what, what grand idea or a couple of small ideas or whatever. And they can go from very small to absurd. Uh, as you may all know, uh, master plans, very small part of it ever gets implemented. But as a grand vision that you build upon and build upon and build upon and over time, hopefully, things happen. And an idea can create new ideas and things like that. So it was just an idea, especially us, because we're ultimately the ones who make decisions here, um, with some guidance, of course. What would you like to see? So, you know, I, I drew all over the map of Berkeley, but, uh, I had a little help from 15 years ago when I drew all over the map of Berkeley last time. So, uh, but it'd be interesting to see what, what things, and there may be some things, I have some that are already kind of in the works, but we had them 15 years ago. It, it didn't make the cut of the, the actual document, but there's some ideas that came out. And some of them maybe are in the works. A couple of them actually almost happened. You know, for example, the path along Coolidge, the bike path or trail. It almost happened when we repaved Coolidge, but because I don't remember what the reason was, some kind of, uh, technicality in the amendment system, amendment process or addendum process, it didn't happen. Uh, another project was the, um, Robina either side of 12 Mile, north and south, a, a community space. That almost happened. And we shouldn't give up on that. So, uh, uh, so that's it. I'd be, you know, I'm, I'm, all of us be interested, as would, um, our future planner, professional planner, uh, firm, would like to know, because they don't know our town, we know our town. And, and, um, throw some ideas out, and this doesn't have to be the end of it. We can talk about the next month, ooh, 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 someone has some ideas, bring them up again. I, you know, want this to keep coming. So, uh, and, uh, Mr. McLean would be happy to write down hundreds of ideas for us and, uh-
Maybe, maybe dozens.
Okay.
That's, is, how's that for an introduction? I get the point.
That's good.
I think you all knew what I was, uh-
So we have that, and then if anyone has any comments on the scope of work too, um, let's get those on the table so we can get this out to a planning consultant here shortly. So who wants to share their idea first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Well, my, my thinking was, is the typical community, what I've done in the community and how I run around and go a lot of different places. Last couple summers with my kids being younger, I spent a lot of time on bikes and riding around and going places. And the biggest thing I find is every time I go someplace, I'm always stopping at a corner because we have to cross the street with little kids. There is almost no pathways in the city except for by the community center where you can go more than a couple hundred feet without having to stop at a corner. So I was almost thinking at one point, starting almost like Woodward and working a trail all the way across the city to the community center and all the way over to 12 Mile, all the way over to 12 Mile and all the way back around, some kind of a path. And we'd have to cut off roads and rerouting things a bunch of different ways. But I've talked about a couple of different people and they like the idea, but the problem is, is nobody wants to have their street cut off at a, the end of the block or the middle of the road or beyond that position, but as a whole, I think it would benefit the community if you had a pathway to go from Woodward all the way over to Greenfield, all the way up to 12 Mile or even down to 12 Mile from Webster and tie all the parks together and make a big community thing out of it. Somehow tie the parks together because, you know, riding the city is, with little kids, is, is kind of interesting because you have to stop a lot.
It's very challenging.
And some of the people that drive don't seem to care.
Yeah.
So that was one thing that I threw, that I had an idea for. Uh, and maybe along the way you could put little, I don't know, stops for people to stop in and do things and exercise stations or other ideas that can come into play.
So I had a similar thought, the bike path from Coolidge, that was in the previous master plan. I don't know if any of you have ever biked down the sort of sidewalk that's next to the cemetery, but it is really hard. So I had a, the similar thought to, to realize that concept, especially with the, the new shopping center, lifestyle center, whatever you want to call it, by Beaumont. Especially with that coming in and with the exercise stations and maybe a bike repair station or something like that. I think it's a great idea.
And there's, there's more to come with the bike idea, so we'll talk about that during the liaison portion of it.
But with the Coolidge Road died and the bike path.
It's, uh, uh, on the previous master plan, there was a discussion, you said the, the, the key thing, tie the parks together. And whatever that path becomes, you know, you're not going to be cutting off a lot of roads. That's just the reality of it, and you're right about that.
Yeah, it's hard for me not to cut off certain roads though, because-
Yeah, yeah, well, that, that's the possibility, absolutely.
You also have-
Some of the roads, you have people racing down a lot of times.
That strip along, I think it's Webster on the, I have to think about my directions here. On the east side of Webster, there, there is a space that does not have a lot of roads that intersect with it. The west side?
Webster runs east and west.
Oh, thank you. The north side of Webster.
By, by Beaumont, you mean?
Yes, there's a, there's uninterrupted space there that-
The Royal Oak side though, of Webster.
Right, but who's this-
But I'm saying that, that-
It's a wide road. You could push the lanes over.
But, and we could also work with Royal Oak to establish some sort of regional connection.
Right, they, right, cuts off.
Yeah.
There's also a tiny little nature center.
I love that place. The little garden, yeah.
The water tower.
That's by the water tower. Which isn't too far away from those two parks right there.
Correct.
JC Park right there, isn't it?
Yes, JC Park where the, that's where the splash pad's going, right?
No, that's going at Merchants Park.
No, no, that's Merchants Park down the southeast corner, southwest corner.
So even if you were to connect JC Park though?
Right. Well, that brings up another, one of the little items I had. You have JC Park and then a block and then you have, uh, Patengill. Wouldn't it be nice? Now, it involves two or four or six homes, but again, this is master plan. Wouldn't it be nice to be able to connect those two in some manner?
Yes.
Maybe along Webster. You know, and then we're not going to bulldoze homes or anything. But the point is, if there's some opportunity to make a 40-foot or 80-foot wide connection, and then with the park across the street or a little nature center across the street and a path, those are the kind, that's what we're all talking about here.
One little piece at a time.
Yeah, but it would be nice to connect those two, because when my kids were younger, you know, my son would be playing baseball, uh, Little League. Well, he'd have his mitt on his head, but they'd have, they'd be playing Little League at Patengill and my daughter would want to be over at the park.
Yeah.
And then that separates us, but wouldn't it be nice if there's a way to connect them? So that's, that's a perfect example of all that kind of stuff kind of ties together. Yep.
Good start.
I think kind of along the same lines, the, I think focusing on the multimodal transportation, um, ways, I think, and, and I would like to see, um, cutting some of the streets off, whether it be along 12 Mile or, um, Greenfield even, to create more of that community space, to make it more walkable, to make it more rideable, to, um, create some of that feeling of the, the greenery and whatnot that, that we've seen come, you know, in some of the guidelines. I think that that, um, helps in all of those areas, right? And whether we- And whether we start that at Rubina, or wherever, yeah. I think that that certainly will help. I think, I'm not a very creative person, but I think one of the opportunities that we have is right here on this, on this corner, and creating what I would call a city center block, right, right here, where we can tie in all of the city services, whether that includes the library or not, and, you know, city hall, police, fire, all in one area, you know, that maybe has shops on the frontage or whatnot. But I think we have a huge opportunity in this area to do that right here in this block. It's right in the middle of the city. Be a perfect spot for something like a city center, I think.
Okay.
Mine's a little bit different. Mine was more around Eleven Mile, and trying to like, some, kind of like an L, Eleven Mile down to maybe La Salle, a little bit further down Coolidge even, to just somehow redo those areas to make them appealing to more people. I mean, it's a lot of like industrial parts, but just some of those buildings, I think, need to be updated. And the same with like down the Woodward stretch. We have Woodward, and I think they're trying really hard to get a couple, like, buildings and updating and whatnot. But it really needs some, I don't know how to do it, but just to get some sort of work done in those areas, is my suggestion. The bike path and the walking. And when we were talking, just instead of like closing streets down, if we could just maybe turn stop signs, not physically close them, but maybe it's an idea to, that way you, your cars are at least stopping when you're riding your bike down. I, I don't know. I don't really ride my bike. I bought it and, I store it.
They spend a lot of time on that bike, so...
But, I mean, it's something, you know, just a little bit maybe easier just to turn a stop sign. And, you know, obviously, the parks are important to me. And just like when, I think we're doing better, but just to have transparency through all of this, when, once we actually start and really dive in with all ages, not just the ones that show up, but somehow reach out, maybe the schools and seniors and everyone in between. I think that's it, for now.
Mr. Richardson, no, those are good.
Oh, excellent. So, Marty challenges us to think big. So, this is a grand idea, or a grandiose idea, depending on your reaction to it, I guess. But I've never been very happy with the DPW yards location. So, I would, I would like to move the DPW yard probably to a location on Eleven Mile. I would have the city acquire the remainder of the block that the current DPW yard is located on, including the Twelve Mile frontage. That would be the site I would pick for a new city recreation center. Possibly a new recreation center and a new city hall could go on that site. I think those uses are more compatible with the neighborhood. I also, I also would like to find ways to incorporate the existing buildings, existing DPW buildings or portions of them into a new facility there. I think the, I think the airplane hangar type garage has a lot of character to it. And it may be, if we don't, if we're not talking about ice rinks or things like that, it might be big enough all by itself to support indoor recreational activities. So, so I'd move civic activities there. I think, I think that would give a boost to that portion of Twelve Mile. I think we're wasting a lot of potential. By having that DPW yard kind of plop down right there, I think it drags down the potential for redeveloping that stretch. So, the existing area where the city hall is located, I would, I would look at that for commercial redevelopment. I think it's suitable for that. The caveat I would add to that is that any redevelopment plan that we are actually lucky enough to enter into would preserve the fire, the old fire hall. I want to see that preserved. The existing ice rink civic center site, I think that should be converted to a park. That should be some green space that we can add to the city that's sorely lacking in green space. And I think a park focusing on outdoor activities would be extremely compatible with the baseball diamonds and the tennis courts, and all the other outdoor things that are going on right there. So, that's, that's my, my vision. I think some of that would be familiar to Mr. Smith, because he presented a somewhat similar plan a long time ago to the city.
Okay. Anyone else?
Sure. So, I think we need to modernize and improve our multi-residential housing, the locations for it, as well as how we transition into the single-family residential and commercial spaces. They should be appealing. They should be, we should push for better quality of housing units. Our, the stock we have now is aged and isn't conducive to a modern community. But I think it's, there's a lot of resistance to multi-residential housing. Unfortunately, it is going to be part of any community's future. A community cannot exist on single-family residence. I think those communities are going to become the graveyards, the, I think they're going to die, those kinds of communities. You need mixed ages, you need mixed, you know, socioeconomic status, and you, but you need a good stock of housing. And you need to be conscious of how that transitions into the spaces. So, we have some nice parcels out there that could be, I identified and expanded a bit into the multi-residential, and particularly, some of these houses, you know, single families age. Maybe those become green spaces to transition. But we can't be afraid of having a better multi-residential plan.
I would agree, in focusing on some of the types of housing that we're missing, the duplex, the fourplex, the townhouse style, we need some of that somewhere, too. So, finding the best place for that, and making sure we set aside areas to accomplish that. Anyone else before I go with mine?
I'll go. Again, it's in the existing master plan, the downtown plaza, like at Rubina. I still think that's something that needs to be looked at. Some of the other things, Ms. Buckler, the multifamily, we have to look at where we can find locations for that. So, those are some of my things, some of the suggestions I've heard. I'm jotting them down, the ones that I like, so...
I think we've had, these are all really good ideas. It would be great to use this as a jumping off point for the consultant to start the master plan process.
I...
Go ahead, Mr. I was going to let you conclude, but go ahead.
Well, I have a list of twenty-five, and I could talk for two or three hours. Like I said, I had the luxury of looking at something from fifteen years ago, and a lot of them are regurgitated. The Rubina was brought up, the bike pathways was brought up, the DPW yard was brought up. A lot of good ideas. I'll start with the DPW. I didn't think about city, the city civic center being there, and something we've talked about before. We have these two mile-long strips, Twelve Mile and Coolidge, of, of, of small retail. Not that we want large retail, but small commercial, I should say. It's not all retail, it's commercial office and things. The DPW yard, and even across the street, would be a perfect location for multifamily. Create a node there. You come into the, you come into Berkeley, go a few blocks of commercial office, retail, whatever it is, restaurants, all of a sudden, boom. There's, there's a generous amount of some kind of multifamily. Now, DPW yard, there's been talk up in the past about combining services with Huntington Woods. I don't know if that's ever going to happen. But there's also been talk about combining with Huntington Woods and moving it to Eleven Mile on the Oak Park side. So, you know, just finding another place for DPW, and Eleven Mile's probably the right, the right spot. So, if you took your fingers and went to Twelve and Coolidge from DPW, and you swung down, you hit La Salle. It's about, and we've, we've been through this.
Going to try and approach this site?
No. Oh, I imagine there's still a proposal coming someday of multifamily. All I'm getting at, with respect, and it doesn't matter, but all I'm getting at with respect to the master plan, is that's about the same distance to our corner, Twelve and Coolidge, as DPW. It's the perfect place for multifamily housing. It's a big site. Both of those, they're located, people can walk into town. The small businesses love fifty, seventy, a hundred residents, families, whatever, walking into town. They are perfect locations for some denser, not high density, but denser type multifamily. And it's interesting, they're about the same distance. So, that all being said, should nothing ever happen at La Salle with multifamily, I think that'd be a great civic center. And again, these are just ideas. We don't know what's happening, or if it's going to happen. We have everything there. It's old. But with what, with the votes we've had in the past, and the situation with the ice arena, and that property there, and the community center, and the city hall, instead of spending twenty million on a civic center in a city hall, you could dump seven, eight, ten million into that existing school building. You'd have a jewel. Save Berkeley, citizens a lot of money, plenty of parking. So, now, if there's a developer out there, if there's a developer out there looking at multifamily, they have the option, by all means, we let that go. And that's, that's theirs. But then that, that area where the ice arena is, as was said, could become a park, or some proper parking. We have some issues with parking also. But we need green space in this town. So, that, between park and parking, we could really utilize that space. There's another opportunity, talk about grand schemes, for a community center. And this kind of came up, not this last cycle with the school board, but previously. We got a school there, Anderson School. It's really two parts. There's a two-story wing of classrooms, and then there's the rest of the building, the administration, the gym, the kitchen. That western half would also make a great community center. Got a big chunk of property north, across Catalpa, north of the high school. You could put a state-of-the-art junior high building there. Now, this is super big picture, because it involves the, the school board and everything else. Super state-of-the-art building there with some labs.
You're talking about the practice football area?
Partially, part, yeah, the practice field. There's a school, old school building in there, which is a maintenance building. I think the robotics works out of that. But there's some property there. And, you know, I don't know how it all fits, but you could do a state-of-the-art art, technology, labs, that the high school can use. They're across the street from each other, a lot of interaction there. And then that two-story wing of the junior high maybe goes down. Our Hurley Field is buried. People can't find it. So, all of a sudden, we can open it up to Catalpa, which is a main street in our town. We don't like to admit it, but it is. Maybe there's a little bit of parking out there, certainly the view. So, there's options, just ideas of how things can move around. We mentioned tying those two parks together up along Webster. There's a corner Berkeley doesn't have a park, up in the northeast corner. We talked about tying up, blocking off some streets. Edgewood is a boulevard. And there's a lot of property there between Brookline, which is that short street that runs parallel to Woodward. I have this all, I have this all drawn, I'll give you a copy of it. There's a chunk of property there, the Edgewood Boulevard between Brookline and Woodward, well-protected from Woodward, with berms and landscaping. That'd be a nice little park for kids. Because there's nothing in that corner of town.
Yeah, you're right.
The closest thing is the Tot Lot, or Rogers.
But that's even a bit of a distance.
That's a long distance, yeah. So, you know, there's an opportunity about closing off some streets. Closing off some streets at Rubina, Twelve Mile, North and South, creating that civic center. Capture the theater again. Okay, it's an idea. They probably have a two thousand year lease on that building.
Yeah.
But, but, we can create a civic center. We have a plaza, North and South. We can maybe recreate a theater, which I think could survive now. Coffee shop, gallery. We're starting to see some gallery-type, we could have a cultural center right there. And there's a lot of pieces, but if it could come together, so that's a big picture idea. The entry points of Berkeley, you know, there's no identification. Several could use some down Woodward, Eleven Mile, maybe Catalpa and Greenfield, multifamily housing. Something a little denser in those locations. Even at Twelve, I'm sorry, Twelve and Greenfield, or Coolidge and Eleven Mile, get a little denser commercial in there. Identify the entry points of our, of our town. We talked about the path along Coolidge to Thirteen Mile, that new development up there. That'd be wonderful. Another little item, and I don't, was it, I don't know if it was in the master plan, on the northeast corner at the cemetery of Twelve and Coolidge, a veterans' park. There's a, there's a, there's, and that's, the veterans are, are, section of the cemetery, I believe, is in that corner of Roseland. Not directly, but that'd be a nice little civic park. Maybe work a deal out with Roseland, open it up again. It used to be, we used to take our kids in there on their bikes and walk. It's quiet.
Well, that would be a good place to bike with kids.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it, you know, because of fears of vandalism, and maybe there was vandalism, I don't remember. But it would be nice to work something out with Roseland, to open that up again. It's a, it's a park. It's the biggest park we have. I have a couple areas identified that, you know, could use some upgrading. We have some areas, and I won't mention them here, and I won't list through it. But, you know, there's a lot of little things going on. It'd be nice to maybe redevelop them. Eleven Mile, it came up, and I, somewhere in here, Oak Parks has redistricted, or doing some work, identifying some areas for multifamily?
Yes, they currently have a stretch on Eleven Mile that's now allowing for a mixed-use development. And I believe there's a brewery going in. And so, it's, you know, while we don't have any, you know, really any vacant buildings on Eleven Mile, I think the aesthetic could be improved, and it'd be nice to kind of do something similar to what Oak Park is doing. I think that's going to help attract more life to that corridor.
Yeah.
And really live-work.
Yeah, exactly. That's one of them, multifamily, live-work, mixed-use. It's very, like, every, the problem we have, and we all know it, we're, we're very thin with our non-residential uses. They're just skinny. But that's a perfect stretch to, and we've talked about those, the pa, I don't know if all of you folks are wrong, but we have talked about that in the past on Eleven Mile. And that's a great strip, you know, between Greenfield and Coolidge. It's not the nicest entry point to our town, but there's a lot of opportunity there. A former planning commissioner, who sat next to me, David Sabah, was a, was an artist. And he thought that'd be a great place for, I don't know if you use the word artist colony, but that'd be a great place for little, small industry with the artistic bent. And that'd be live-work type spaces. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of power there, a lot of electricity there, a lot of buildings there. It'd be good, it'd be a good, good place for that. Whatever, I don't want to leave anything out.
You were thinking.
Well, like I said, I thought about it a lot.
Somebody's their decade's old.
And I won't get into all of it. There is one, item twenty-four and twenty-five, along Greenfield. Twenty-four from Eleven to Coolidge, my comment is, don't know. And...
That's a fair comment.
And Twelve Mile to Webster is... And Twelve Mile to Webster is, really don't know. On all the years I've been on this, eighteen and a half years, no one has ever had any idea what to do with that strip. It's a mile and a half long. We see, we've had, there's a couple, a couple empty lots. We've seen some work-live things that never happened. We saw some multiple family that never happened. We tried to rezone it into something. Nothing's happened. You see some commercial eking out of living in these houses. There's some, there's some apartment buildings here and there, but it's just, if anybody has any idea what to do with that strip.
The, the, all of Greenfield?
Greenfield, yeah, it's just...
It's a challenge.
It's don't know and really don't know, and...
Shouldn't be residential.
It's the only, it, it's the only residential on Greenfield until you get up to, you know, past Thirteen Mile, where Greenfield starts petering out.
There's no depth, there's no depth.
Yeah, exactly. Same thing with the Eleven Mile, like, it's hard having houses on that strip that's on the east end.
But Eleven Mile already has something going with the small industrial.
Right.
That can be converted into something with a little tweaking and a little help, maybe something can happen. Greenfield...
Yeah, that's a challenge.
Just don't know. And the, obviously, you know, the Woodward, the strip, the strips along the commercial on Twelve and Coolidge, whatever those, those things, they're thin. They're gonna develop over time. I don't know, you know, maybe there's some locations we wanna push and shove, like, I don't wanna... Well, you know, Hartfield is a large piece of property and they, they ebb and flow. That's, that'd be a great piece of property to redevelop. The road's already blocked off there. I don't remember which street it is, but it's already blocked off. That'd be great. But they're still in business and good for them. And so, I kinda beat it up a little bit here.
Oh, that was good.
And I'll give a copy of this. I have numbers all over the map.
I'd like, I'd like to read, like, that Twelve Mile between Woodward and Coolidge, you know, particularly where, is it North Point or the, or not? That's a nice chunk for multi-residential, like, it's across from the cemetery. There could be enough space for a buffer.
There's that huge parking lot.
It's just asphalt, asphalt, asphalt.
My comment there, Twelve Mile, Woodward to Coolidge, it's dead on one side and there's a cemetery on the other. So, I mean, it's, but a lot of that's new development. You know, those, a lot of those medical, that, to me, in my humble opinion, I think we're stuck with a medical towards the east end. Now, towards Coolidge, it's ripe for some redevelopment. There's some little, little places there.
I don't think we're stuck with anything, with the right developer and the right price.
Yeah.
And with medical buildings, with the changing needs of those, I mean, these buildings are almost becoming obsolete. Because they were built, what, twenty, twenty-five years ago?
They, almost twenty.
Have you been inside them recently? It's like, they do need to be updated.
Do they?
Like, the one in the far, the big one on the far east is like...
At, at Brookline.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely ripe for an upgrade.
Right.
Nothing personal. I don't wanna get any hate mail.
Well, we're, we're, as always, when we talk about rezoning or talk about master planning, we're always stepping on someone's property. And, and again, these are ideas. There's no bulldozers. There's no eminent domain.
No taking.
There's no taking. These are ideas. These are what-if. And then there's the big one, the big elephant to the north, Beaumont. I think, and that's off Robina is kinda close to where that path going into Beaumont is. With the new development of Thirteen and Woodward, having some bicycle path or linear park, I think is what we called it last time.
Yeah.
That's, that, that'd be great, but if we could tap into Beaumont or get them down for lunch, there's, I don't know how many thousands of employees are there every day.
Well, plus the employees that live here, that, that would want to go to Beaumont.
And not to mention residential opportunities. People, people who, residents, nurses, and sure, a lot of them live in Berkeley, but promote this area, you know, just, just west of St. John's Woods, that's, they can walk to work.
You should have a parking deck inside that giant lot.
Yeah.
So, Royal Oak has revived its sustainability planning process, from what I understand. So, it might be worth tapping into some of that and seeing what that looks like for this area, if there's anything we can hook into.
Okay, so I beat that all up, but I'll give a copy of this to...
Good ideas.
I'll give a copy of this to, to Tim.
So, my things have mostly been covered.
It's all right.
No, that's all right. I was thinking about Eleven Mile, though, and kind of going along with the artist idea. I think that those parcels, if we could get a couple together, would be a good spot for, like, a maker's space, where people could come in and, you know, rent a small studio space out of a larger building and, and do some sort of art-type thing there. I think it would complement what Oak Park is doing on their side, too, with the breweries. Those types of uses, I think, would be good there, too. So, breweries, anything that's typically listed as a use permitted in industrial park, but is not your standard manufacturing, I think, is what we're looking for there.
Those are breeders for more things.
Right, yep. And they could have some ancillary, multiple-family housing or live-work spaces that go with it. I think that that's the corridor that, that that could be. Just when you were talking about Greenfield, I hadn't really given it a thought, but I think the uses that might fit, particularly between Eleven Mile and Twelve Mile, are institutional uses that we usually see in single-family districts. So, churches, for example, although I don't know how many people are building new churches, but daycare centers, funeral homes is something else that's, that's considered as a grouping in there. Those types of uses, I think, that are typically found in single-family residential districts are not as, impactful isn't the right word, but don't act as much of a nuisance as some of the other retail-type uses might be. I, I think that's what might fit there, and it would require someone to assemble parcels.
Exactly, and you're right about that, because if you look at the Greenfield zoning, I think it's called, we took the zoning ordinance into Elwood, the first street, and the idea was a senior housing project, assisted living.
That would work there, too.
Well, that's exactly what that zoning is aiming for. But again, you have to assemble twenty-something properties to make something like that work. They can be smaller. You can do it with four, five, six properties, but still, these forty-foot lots is just...
I know, it's tough.
And in some cases, we took it to both sides of Elwood.
We did. We took it across the street. You're right, yeah.
I think, like, near Twelve Mile, up near Twelve Mile, I think, and down near Eleven Mile.
So, maybe as part of the master plan, we include some sort of market study of Greenfield and Eleven Mile. I think Woodward's doing okay. I agree, it's a little bit piecemeal, but, and look at what's missing. Obviously, senior housing, we know, is missing. Why haven't these parcels been assembled? What's the, the barrier people can't seem to get over? And maybe we take a couple places and look at them as redevelopment sites, kind of how the downtown design guidelines and downtown master plan is doing, and give people some ideas or impetus of what could be done. A lot of these ideas, too, are, are being touched on in the downtown master plan, so that's good to see some cohesion there. But, other than that, I think that the, the scope of work is good. Tim, I think we can run with that. I think we can give this big list of grand plans to whoever our consultant is, and hopefully, they can take a few of them and, and see how they would work and if they make sense.
Madam Chair, I have some questions, a question and a comment regarding the scope of work. In terms of upgrading or updating information, second bullet point, existing conditions, I, I, I can certainly understand that we'll be pulling in kind of the standard housing data that, that we're familiar with. I personally would like to get a little deeper dive into housing. I'd like to know what the, what the, what the, some details about the housing stock, the, the, the ages of the houses, the respective square feet of the houses, all, all with a, with a view toward how, how primed, how ready is this community for the next, the next era in, in American housing? You know, is our housing stock adequate? Is it being replaced, how fast is it being replaced, by what? I, I would just like a little more detail than you typically see in, when we run housing statistics in these kind of plans. In terms of green infrastructure, I, I assume, it doesn't say it, but I, I certainly assume that includes an examination of the potential for additional green space. Not, not just, you know, a kind of infrastructure that we use that we've been talking about, like bike paths and, and so on, but, but, but actual areas that could be converted to parkland or even, even semi-natural areas. I don't know, you know, what, what those areas are. I don't know how much potential there is in a place like Berkeley for that, but I, I would like that to be looked at because I, I perceive it as a problem in this community, lack of green space. Also, I'd like some consideration in the scope of work to the whole topic of energy efficiency. Where, where, right now, the city has gotten a, a small grant to begin to develop an energy efficiency plan for municipal buildings. But I think that we should be looking at energy efficiency more broadly than just municipal buildings. And certainly, there's a direct connection between density, multi, availability of multimodal transportation, potential for alternative energy, you know, that are appropriate for planning, issues that, that really relate to energy efficiency. So, I would like that addressed or considered as we move forward in developing this plan. And so, I think, I think that was about it.
So, it may be appropriate, then, to actually include a chapter on housing, an analysis of the current stock and a prediction of what we're missing.
And the city has those statistics. In the last, you know, ten years, we've seen a lot of homes. Knocked down, small homes knocked down, Bigfoots, as we call them, put in their place. But there've been a lot of homes that have had substantial additions. And with the records in the building department, that would be good to know, you know, go back, you know, fifteen, ten, five, what the trend is. Is that, has that leveled off or whatever? But that'd be very informative for what, you know, on top of what, what you're saying. What has been the trend in Berkeley with the, with the bigger homes?
I'd like to go back to a comment about your energy efficiency. I'm one of those people that has put solar in my house. I don't brag about it, but they did the nice beneficial thing of giving me a city permit and taking that out of my taxes also. They do not give you any benefits in this city to improve your solar, put solar in your house, any kind of benefits for going more efficient. And basically, they almost tell you, that's great, but we're gonna charge you more afterwards because you did something good for the environment. And you, I think that comes more from Oakland County than it does from the city because they're the ones that dictate our taxes.
Yeah, Oakland Counties are...
But if we could come up with something to make it more beneficial, and that's gonna benefit me now, that would improve it. I mean, the federal government did their share of it, but now I'm sitting here to pay my city taxes, which have been jacked up by roughly four percent. Not, nothing I complain about, but four percent is what they added to it. So, that's something I found was kind of disheartening, was I'm spending the extra money to do this and then you guys attack me with an added tax.
That's a great point.
And I, as I said, I don't think that comes from Berkeley. That comes from Oakland County.
Right.
It does, yeah.
But we have connections to the county. We ought to be able to...
And you can thank Ann Arbor for that one, because they're the ones that ultimately started the added tax to the improvements to your house for a energy efficiency item.
Good.
That was, as I said, it kinda hits home.
No, I think that's a great comment.
So, I mean, if there was a benefit to do it, you'd have more people. I know that there's people on Tyler that have done it. There's some people over on Bacon that have added solar to the house. And I, I think it's a great benefit to the area.
It's not even just solar. It's also, you know, upgrading the insulation. And, you know, I put a hole in my plaster one day. I see the back of the brick. So, it tells you how good my house is insulated. But foam insulation, which is, you know, in bungalows, it's very difficult to get to some places. And they have the foam, but it's incredibly expensive. And again, just like solar, anything like that. And again, that, that, the, the feds in some state, there's some grants and kickbacks, even appliances for things like that, but you're right, the, the, the county does, they smack you.
And one more thing going on to energy, energy efficiencies. Our city's infrastructure, every time we have windstorms, every time we have ice storms, the overhead power lines are all out there. And this is a pining-ass guy idea. Getting them underground would be an amazing thing for our city. But that's a hundred years down the road when the system burns out and kills itself, basically, is what's gonna happen. Because I know some of the poles that are in the backyards are from the nineteen twenties and thirties.
Oh, I'm sure.
I don't wanna mention any names, but I know places where there's a veritable forest along the utility easement. And we had a crew out in our neighborhood all day cutting trees down, and they never, they didn't get done because we had this windstorm that came up.
Did anybody lose power last, this, last couple days?
No, I started my generator to make sure it ran, so I knew...
Yeah, I have my, I rolled mine out, but that's why y'all didn't lose power. But, yeah, I'm surprised because those winds were intense. And nobody, I don't know anybody who lost power in Berkeley, so maybe all the branches came down last one.
If that's something we could possibly put in the city plans, just start having more underground utilities.
Well, it happens with new construction, but to go through the grid system, you know, there's sixty, six thousand houses, which means there's six thousand pieces of, of right-of-way, not right-of-way, easement. And, you know, if there's six thousand yards, there's nine thousand poles. So, it's just, it's a million to millions of dollars.
Be interesting to hear DTE's thoughts on that, because having the infrastructure above ground is a hazard to them, to them, right?
It's an insurance issue, too.
They directionally bore it. It's not like they...
I mean, they just ran through A one, two, three, and that, just, just tore through our city and put a fire object for AT&T in, had very little impact on the city.
Yeah, that'd be a good question to pose to them, though.
I, I know our infrastructure's aging. There's no reason why we couldn't start looking into it in the master plan and say, hey, we'd like to start changing this to underground.
I think at this stage, it's, we should put that on the table and, and see if we can deal with that.
And then it also leads into the whole city sewer issues, but I don't know if we wanna go into that far of it.
So, it would be interesting to get engineering's take on where this falls, CIP versus the master plan. Because I, I think we're getting into, when we get into infrastructure, some of, a gray area, under whose jurisdiction does this fall. I think it's worth it to include as wish-list items. I think we definitely need the input on that.
I'm sure ninety percent of the people whose basement's flooded every time it rains would love to see that something's being done for it.
I'm sure they would. Anyone else? So, I think we gave you a long list of items, Tim, but...
Did you get them all? I'm seeing a consensus.
Yeah, a couple themes.
On what the big, the big-ticket items are.
I didn't mention my babbling brook idea, but I will.
There's probably some buried streams in here somewhere.
Well, pretend that some of the sewers are streams and daylight them.
It's about as big a ticket item as you could do in Berkeley, but it would help that.
Yeah.
Okay, any liaison reports from anyone?
I can speak on behalf of the DDA. Even though I didn't attend the meeting, I did read through the meeting minutes. They did approve the Mogo Bikes. They're providing two satellite stations, which adds to our, you know, infrastructure of our city for bike paths and stuff like that. And I know Vivian did contact me regarding some of the possibility of artwork on Twelve Mile, so...
Awesome.
Microphone.
Sorry, Vivian.
Just to remind you guys that Thursday night is our second public input session. So, if you actually wanna come and see the concepts for the downtown master plan and these exciting ideas that you're talking about at Robina and Infill and all that other cool stuff, plus parking study updates, you should be there, six-thirty to eight-thirty. at the Collaborative Center Thursday night, uh, and if you can't make it Thursday night, Friday, we'll have our field house open from eleven to two, you can meet with the consultant team there. The other thing, when we're talking about, um,
Eleven to two P M?
Eleven to two, uh, at, uh, in the Right Moves Consignment space, so right next to TLC, the lunch cafe on twelve mile. You'll be able to go in and interact with those, their consultants, just like you would, uh, the evening before, cool stuff. I've seen it, I think you guys will be excited about what these guys are doing with our downtown. The other thing is, remember, when we're talking about the multi-community planning process, there's actually, um, an open house tonight and tomorrow night in Huntington Woods and Oak Park in, um, Berkeley, it'll be March fourteenth, which is a Wednesday, upstairs at, um, the Public Safety Building, but they'll be looking at those corridors along Coolidge from nine to, nine mile to twelve mile, from eleven mile, uh, from Greenfield to Woodward, uh, looking at, um, pedestrian access, at, um, multimodal transportation opportunities, at lane reductions, as well as that whole sustainable infrastructure. So they're going to be pointing out areas that would be appropriate to do sustainable infrastructure along those two corridors. So that should be really a good session, too.
Thanks. Anyone else, Mr. Richardson?
The Environmental Committee, uh, met last month and we're meeting again Thursday, six thirty, at the, uh, second floor of the Public Safety Building, and, uh, we, uh, are in the process of reviewing the draft, um, energy efficiency plan. I'm very pleased at the, uh, response that our committee members have, have given to, uh, the draft, we've received a number of, um, detailed comments, and, um, so we'll be discussing that, and, uh, we're actually gonna have, uh, our March meeting, we're gonna have, uh, the consultant come in, and, uh, we'll, we'll try and, um, get our act together and, and have a, a focused discussion, uh, with the consultant, um, at our March meeting. And it, before long, this whole process will be opened up to the community at large for, for, for broader input. So, but, but it's, it's an exciting, uh, exciting development for, for the city, and timely, because we, um, we are hopefully on the verge of replacing some of our civic buildings or significantly upgrading them, so, we hope to do that in a energy efficient way.
Good. Anyone else, Mr. Murray?
Chamber.
Yep.
So they're, uh, they have a hometown art event, it's, uh, taking place in ten business locations, it's art that students in the school district do. They, they've done it the last couple of years, so, that starts on March fourteenth. In the fall, there's gonna be a city guide, that's gonna be for Berkeley and Huntington Woods that they're putting together. Uh, and then they talk some about the street art fest, they're expanding it a little bit, gonna have more music and entertainment and things like that. And that's, oh, one other thing too, that was mentioned, is south side of Robina, where they have some of those planters and stuff, all that's gonna be coming out, and there's gonna be some playscape there for
Good.
Kids.
Good.
No?
Never mind.
It's a grant, it's a grant, right?
Almost good.
Grant?
I don't want to start rumors. But the DDA, that's one of the areas that we're focusing on for next year, is to possibly try and do something there. We applied for a grant through the Wilson Foundation and Kaboom, uh, to see about getting grant money to do a playscape there. Worst case scenario, we have, we're hoping to have money in the budget to at least demo some of that old, um, you know, concrete aggregate, and kind of freshen it, and do some sort of a pop-up play space temporarily. So, yes, that's in a, in the works, and if you show up Thursday night, uh, you'll be able to see a concept for what might go there.
Okay.
Okay, but that's, you know, that, that's a, a big grant, uh, and, um, who, uh, you know, it's probably a long shot to get that Wilson Foundation grant to do everything we talked about, but,
Okay.
Yeah, but there are plans.
It was supposed to be tied to a grant, yeah.
Yeah, and there are plans to try and freshen that southeast corner next year.
Thanks, Vivian.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is a liaison report, unless someone else has something, I apologize.
I was just gonna talk about the council for just a second.
Please do.
So Vivian and I had the opportunity to present the design, uh, overview, overview ordinance, design review ordinance to the council at their last meeting. I'm hopeful it's going to go on the next meeting for first reading, is that correct, Tim?
The DDA director and I had some conversations earlier, um, we may push that back.
Okay. Okay, so at an upcoming meeting? Yep, okay. So if everyone remembers, the, um, zoning map needs to be amended as part of that to show the boundaries of the new overlay district. So that will be coming to us very shortly, I imagine. So, okay, so that may wait, but we had the chance to present that and council, um, seemed to have no concerns with it, there was a, a couple of questions here and there. And, and some concerns noted, but overall, it seemed like it was a positive reception, so that was good. Mr. Smith, you had something else?
Thank you, thank you, yes, um, I attended the, uh, recreational marijuana open house, and Ms. Buckler was there, I think the whole city council was there. But, um, it's very informative, uh, they had a, a, a general counsel from the Michigan Municipal League, uh, give a presentation, and, uh, more gray areas than there are resolved issues as far as the, the law. Uh, but there's an item for the planning commission. This is brought up, and, um, I just want to make sure, um, that we don't have, where it's not a decision we have to deal with now, but we will, we may eventually. Should, uh, should city council decide, uh, not to opt out, and I don't know if they're gonna opt out or not, but that, that, that doesn't matter. Where would we put these things? If you think of the geometry or the geography of our town, we mentioned it tonight, everything's very thin. Any location, we put in Berkeley, and I looked on the map with the exception of maybe four sites, it will always be next to somebody's yard or home. And I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, I'm just saying that if and when that comes to us in this,
Church.
Well, you can't do that.
Right, I'm saying.
Yeah, you, those are out. I mean, there's the whole strip along, uh, Coolidge north of Catalpa, which doesn't resonate, touch against, uh, uh, any residences, but it's the high school, it's the practice field, which is still public school property, and maybe a junior high, no, sorry, but, um,
Future site of the Smith Junior.
But, that's as far as I've got. But this is a decision that city council's gonna be weigh, weighing by the end of the year, whether or not, whether or not to opt out, and, uh, but, as far as we're concerned, if it happens, or when it happens, we have to put it someplace, and there's no place in this town to put it. One spot's right next to City Hall on the corner up there, that'd be a nice welcome to Berkeley.
Not take Mr. Kabbab, do not take Mr. Kabbab.
But there's no place in our town to put it where it doesn't back up to somebody's yard.
Yeah, that would be a concern we definitely would have.
And that is a, that is a difficult one for us as a body, when someone's out there, and when a bunch of people are out there. Where we may someday have to make that decision, so just think about that when it comes up.
Can I ask a question about that? Was the revenue, uh, that you can get from?
The revenue?
It's nothing, okay, that's, that was my question.
The number, they made up a bunch of numbers, and they were big numbers, I'll just, they started with a trillion-dollar business with a T. And they assumed, if there's a thousand licenses, and there's five or six licenses, maybe seven, I, I lost track there. Say Berkeley got ten licenses, but there's different kinds. It comes down to about eleven thousand dollars a year per license. It's nothing.
That wasn't enough to pay for pub, additional public safety or anything?
It's nothing, and I'm not saying that's yea, yea or nay on it, but it's just the revenue, by the time they carry thing off, yeah, there's nothing left.
It's not a big part of the decision. Voters voted for that, they voted for what, the ten percent excise tax? I mean, the other states have up to like thirty-seven percent or something ridiculous like that, it's, they voted for a low tax.
But the, but the, what the, uh, uh, general counsel said, he told a story about his daughter who was in her twenties. And he says, she goes, well, I voted for it, and, uh, you know, fine, he said, fine, nobody should be arrested for having a joint in their purse or whatever. He goes, well, we live on Main Street, what if they put a, a facility, and there's businesses across from them? What if they open up a store across the street, and she went, I didn't think of that. So that's just something we have to think about, so, um, uh, so, whatever's worth, that's just something to think about, because it may be coming.
Okay. Any other comments from anyone before we close out the evening?
Madam Chair, just a reminder, and I'll send out an email to, uh, to everybody, reminding, uh, next Thursday, March seven, there will be the, the training put on by Carlisle Wartman for Planning Commission and TBA, and I believe city council will be in attendance as well.
That's on the, uh, second floor of the Public Safety Building, is that correct?
Correct. That'll begin at six P M, uh, we'll have some light food, and then training should go till, I believe, eight thirty.
Okay, great, thank you for mentioning that.
Did we skip over the last session of public comment?
Oh, yes, thank you, anyone else from the public who would like to comment? Okay, we will close that, thank you for the reminder. There's no other comments, does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting is adjourned, thanks everyone.